Okay, it's 5:30. I would like to begin this caucus session on our council. Are there any recommended changes or additions to the agenda presented this evening?
Mr. President, we are going to need to have an executive session at some time during the meeting to talk about disposition of real estate pending litigation and employment of a public employee.
Okay. Okay, I would like to call this April 15, 2015, Council meeting of the Order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual with liberty and elections for all.
Would the clerk please go to roll?
Mr. Dragan?
Yes.
Mr. Cuzar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Tisch?
Here.
Okay, thank you. All of you have received a set of minutes from the April 1 regular council meeting. Are there any revisions to those minutes? If not, they stand approved on record. Under Reading and Communications, Mr. Tisch?
I have no communications. I don't want to manage your submitted.
Mr. Rogers?
I have no communications.
Mr. Morbe?
Just that what we got in our packet, that Jubilee Christian Fellowship Church is having a groundbreaking ceremony. This is the corner of 426, Sunday, April 19 at 12:30. And they have a phone number if anybody had questions.
Yes. As far as that, I'm planning to attend.
Okay. Mr. Morina?
Yes, a couple of communications. First off, I received a letter of thanks from the American Legion Post 177 for our participation in Memorial Day services throughout the years and again, hoping that we get participation again this year. I will need to hear from you whether you will be available that day or not so they can schedule the various parts of that presentation. Public notice from Eastgate that they're having a mandatory pre-application workshop for application for the next round of the Appalachian Regional Commission grants. This was one of the funding sources we took advantage of for the initial investigation of the 24-inch water line. It could be a funding source for the proposed nursing facility, so I do plan on attending to make sure that we can become an applicant there. Also received a public notice from the Ohio Department of Development Disabilities for the Gateway to Better Living on Talsman. It's basically a public notice of the facility and if we have any comments, let them know during this period. We've not received anything in the office. I don't know if anybody's received any comments about the facility, so really don't need to respond to us or something. And I also received a complaint from one of the residents who received a letter from First Energy wanting an explanation as to the end of the service of their electric aggregation program. I don't know if anybody else received one of these or not in the city. I talked to Tom Bellish and it was an error, not on our Buckeyes part, but on First Energy, our contract runs through May of 2018. So if you do get any calls on that, they were sent out in error and really just be thrown away. And that's basically all I have under communications.
Okay. Under reports of committee city managers and department heads, Mr. Rogers?
I have the report.
Mr. Morbe?
Just nothing. The ambulance is up and running. They've been on a few adults. Working on getting the new station plans all finalized and that's it. I think we have a board meeting next week if anybody's interested, so.
Can you, Mr.?
I have the report for the month of March for Mayor's Court. We had gross collections of $8,158.12 and after we paid the required various funds that we must pay into from that, we had a net collection of $6,919.12.
Okay. John?
Okay. Just a reminder, the brush pickup will commence on April 20th. So the media gets that out and people will pay attention to that. And the last pickup date would be the week of Monday, May 11. Also been informed by the Ohio Turnpike Commission that the Timber Run Extension Project is scheduled to begin on May 4th. That's weather permitting, but they are looking at that date for starting that particular project. Reminder tomorrow evening, the Chamber sponsored Good Evening Campville event being held at the Country Club. That's tomorrow evening. And the mayor along with Jim Kinnick from the Ohio Department of Transportation will be speaking on the project status on the 224-11 Bridge. We'll hear an update on the library from the director Heidi and Heidi Daniels. And the focus will be on the arts, including artwork completed by the Campville High School students. I hope to see a lot of you there at that event tomorrow evening. I received a public records request from Frank McKea a couple of weeks ago and he was asking about the cost of wages for the gentlemen and ladies to be here, for the staff members basically, to be here at the council meetings. And I just thought it was interesting information and I had provided that note to him this evening. But for the first quarter, the salaries for the road superintendent, the police chief, zoning officer, and the finance director totaled $2,987. And that's for the first quarter, so times four, we're looking at about $13,000, $12,000. That's being spent to attend these meetings. And my particular opinion, I think that information could be made available just as you made the request for this as a public record and that $12,000 could be used to pave the road. I'd like to also state the Fairview project is getting underway. We're scheduled to start that Monday. We did some water line relocation work this week. And the contractor on the first phase is also scheduled to come in next week to finish up the work on the first phase. So that should be taking place. One other thing I wanted to mention, there was a lot of healthy discussion during the budget hearings about the status of the general fund and that kind of falls in line with what I just mentioned about the $13,000 that we're spending to have our staff attend these meetings. Again, we're in desperate need of some type of increase or new monies to come into the general fund if we're going to continue to provide the services that we provide such as brush pickup and police protection that's provided through the city. We had talked during the budget hearings about a couple of different alternatives, but we haven't really come up with any conclusions in that time. And one of the things we also talked about was the possibility of putting something on the, as a special election or on the November ballot. We are looking at a special election. The deadline is May 6, which is our next council meeting. And that would be too late to act on anything because it would have to be to the Board of Elections before 4:00 p.m. So if we're, I would strongly suggest that we at least have some healthy discussion on this. If it means having a special council meeting, we do have two weeks this time before the next meeting. And I would like to suggest that we schedule one in concert with the public hearings that we're having for the election districts, possibly next, the Wednesday, the 29th, which would put us two weeks out and give us time and Christine time to put some financials together and have some healthy discussion on that. I hope that you would agree with that.
I guess the question is, we need more than one meeting?
Excuse me?
Mike, we need more than one meeting to make a decision on that. Do you want to push it to 29th because then you're going to have to make the decision at the following meeting? I mean, is there any possibility of having a meeting next week on the 22nd and then a follow-up on the 29th? I mean, that may put some pressure on you to get numbers. I understand that, but I'm just throwing that out there because if we don't reach some conclusion on the 29th, then we're really up against the deadline.
Good point.
But however council wants to proceed, then just think it out loud. Christine, could you have numbers available within a week?
22nd would be the meeting, is that sound?
I think we have a consensus.
Which is a good job. What time? Well, we need a holding motion. I guess that I have a special meeting.
You feel the emotion, man, so that you could set it.
Just make the announcement.
Notice and yeah.
Same time then, 5:30. All right, we'll get that announced. I appreciate that. At least we can lay it out on the table and see where we want to go with that. And the last item, we will have to set two public hearings for lighting district requests that I've received. And this has been kind of unique because in the past, the lighting districts, in days past, Edison used to just come up and string lights on telephone poles and there were no fees tied to that. When the new developments came in with all the underground facilities, it was typically the developer that bought the fixtures and the installation and then the assessment went on to the property owners for just the operation and maintenance. In this particular case, the request came from Stratford Green, which was a newer development that has all underground facilities. And Kings Lake, which is also one of the newer developments with all underground facilities, neither having streetlights. They're both requesting that and what Edison has provided is a cost for the fixture as well as we have to provide a contractor to do the trenching. We're setting that up in a manner that we can have an assessment for the construction portion of it and that'll expire after five years or 10 years, whatever it may be, and then just the operation and maintenance would continue from that point. And this all needs to be explained to the residents so that they understand, you know, if they want this to happen or not, they're certainly going to have to pay for it in some manner. So that's what I'm preparing and I'll be able to explain to the residents when they come to the hearings. Once they have that opportunity to have the hearing, they have 30 days to decide whether they want to go through with it or not. So I recommended a couple of dates there and those don't necessarily have to be council days. There's nothing that could be voted on at that particular time anyways, just to get the information out to the public, so.
Do you have any numbers back as to what the fixed cost portion might be?
Yes, and again, they provided options. A standard pole light fixture for Stratford Green would cost $4,500 for four structures. If they go with the more decorative globe style, colonial style, it's $10,500. The trenching and excavation would be $1,600, $1,650 per light. That includes replacement of sidewalks because basically what they have to do is trench from those square boxes out in the yard to the fixture and replace any sidewalk or anything that's torn up. And that totals out to about $5,400 for the Stratford Green. And if you go again with the standard pole, it would be $9,900 for the total capital cost. Or if you go with the globe style, it would be $15,900 for Stratford Green. Kings Lake, there's 20 fixtures there. And again, using the same singular costs, the total project on the standard pole for Kings Lake would be $24,500 and the decorative pole would be $79,500. And the annual maintenance costs for the association at Stratford would be $48 per month for the operation and maintenance of the lights. And that's the one that would continue on as long as they have the lights in service. And the cost for the homeowner, per homeowner at Kings Lake would be $12 per month per fixtures.
So what you would be proposing is to have two special assessments, one for the fixture and the installation of the fixture and the other for the maintenance?
Right, that was a recommendation that the auditor's office had given me because they'd not had one similar to this either. So they thought that you could do a, set it up in two separate.
What would happen if we took the fixed cost portion, not the maintenance portion? The fixed cost portion divided that by the number of residents that would be participating, what would that cost be per unit and do it as a one-time assessment to the property owner instead of having?
Yeah, those are options that we could throw out on the table. I mean, they could, they can make it a one-time pay and not have to pay interest on that money or the city could borrow that money and spread it out over five years or one year or whatever.
I'm concerned about is the city borrowing that money and then incurring that interest expense, although we have figured that cost.
That would be recaptured, yeah. You're basically just serving as a conduit to fund the project. So that's, those are the options that would be available to the people that are in attendance. And again, it's up to them whether they want to follow through with it or not at that point. That's all I have.
I've been helping Vicki go through her mail and make deposits the last couple days and so has Patty because we're getting inundated. Going through her mail today and the one deposit that I did, there were 85 returns in there. 26 of them did not have the 10,400, copy of the federal 1040 enclosed, which means that Vicki is going to have to send that taxpayer a letter requesting a copy before she can finalize their tax return. So about one-third of them that are coming in, she has to then send follow-up letters out to. And hopefully we get it on the first request and not multiple requests. So it's, she's going to have a big project ahead of her to get all this in.
Is she processing the cash then at that point?
Yeah, we're depositing the cash.
Okay.
Yep.
The police chief had had a conflict with tonight's meeting, so he was excused. I hope we don't have a water break because I don't know where he's going to be here tonight.
I'll read the library for executive session.
And this being Ted's last meeting, whole meeting year, Ted will be leaving us at the end of the month. Ted, did you have your final words? At the design meeting, they approved the wall sign at 584 East Main Street on top the hill. They also approved a freestanding sign and a wall sign at 410 West Main. They approved the shed at 150 High Street. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they granted adjustment at 121 Dartmouth Avenue for side yard adjustment of three feet 10 inches. At the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, they set up a public hearing for an adjustment for signage total and freestanding signs for 113 Talsman Drive and also for conditional permitted use at 530 West Main Street for inside storage facilities. That's all I have.
Let me comment. In fact, this is Ted's last meeting. I'd like to personally thank him for his years of service to the city. He and I had the opportunity to work together for a number of years. There were some times when we had interesting discussions, sometimes more interesting than others, that kind of thing. But I think Ted really took the bull by the horns as far as the zoning code and the subdivision regulations and those kinds of things. Has done an excellent job in enforcing zoning code subdivision regulations, communicating with contractors and personnel and just done an overall exemplary job in that position. And I'd just like to say a thanks.
Thank you.
Paul Seidner?
If I may, and I probably shouldn't even open my mouth, but I have to, but I have to say this. You know, you were talking about the additional $13,000 to have our people here, police chief and director of works and Christine. And I just want to remind everybody that the people that sit up here, we get $100 per meeting. So you don't pay, I mean, you do pay us, but it's minimal. It's minimal. These people here do this job because they love the city and that's the point I want to make. And so. Two things I add. I would do this for half the money. But more important than that, I have a proclamation for Ted. Whereas Mr. Ted Frizzini resides on Fairground Boulevard in the city of Campville and whereas Mr. Ted Frizzini was hired by the city of Campville as zoning inspector part-time on January 1, 1990 and was appointed to full-time position on March 1, 1990 and served in that capacity until his retirement upcoming on April 30, 2050. And whereas Ted Frizzini also served as ex-officio member of the Planning and Zoning Committee, Design Review Committee, Historic Preservation Committee during his tenure with the city of Campville. And whereas Mr. Ted Frizzini is a dedicated public servant, local resident, role model, and his years of service have earned him the admiration and respect of the city's administrative officials and citizens of our city. Now therefore, I, Bernie Coaster Senior, Mayor of Campville, State of Ohio, do hereby present Mr. Ted Frizzini with an official key to the city. It's only should until 8 o'clock. Does it open anything?
It's a key to Farmers National.
Okay. Under persons desiring additional information from department heads, may I ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record and keep your questions, a three minimum, maximum per person at no more than 30 minutes total. Your questions must only pertain to each department head's report this evening. Under recognition of persons desiring to speak before council, may I ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record and keep your comments brief?
Mr. McKea?
Brief is a problem, but I'll look. Good evening. I'm Frank McKea, reside at 224 view. Just a couple items tonight. In regard to the water line replacements, perhaps Mr. Morina can answer the question. If I understand, we're replacing 2,400 feet of 24-inch line with about?
From Kirk Road, how far down?
No, from the Ohio Turnpike, between the Ohio Turnpike and 224 is the only bad section.
Between the Ohio Turnpike and?
Yeah, where the bridge crosses over 11. Crosses underneath.
I thought it was already the Kirk Road.
That's where the mine starts, now that the city owns. But everything from that point appeared to be in.
So the turnpike down, how far toward the city?
That 2,500 feet, but actually it's going to be about 2,000 feet because we did a couple digs already away from the gas line and the pipe was just as good as it was on the other side of the turnpike.
So where does it terminate, about the big water tower?
Right, yeah. If you're pretty much in line with that, that's where the turnpike bridge is. And that's actually where they're going to start on that end and work towards 224 right about midway up the ramp. When it comes over the ramp is where the gas lines come underneath it. We're going to be about 100 feet west of the gas line.
Does that 24-inch line extend over to that water tower, water tank?
To the other tank on Fairground Boulevard, that's correct.
That's part of the replacement?
No, no, it's only being replaced 100 feet west of the gas lines or near the, where the exit ramp comes off the main line.
Does that 24-inch line go or does that other tank?
It does, yes.
But we think that's good.
We've done test digs on that side right now.
When, do you have an estimate of how long the 24-inch line will be shut down?
About 30 days is what they're estimating.
Yeah, we'll be out of action for 30 days and we'll rely on the COVID line to make up.
Right.
Is there any contingency that we don't have that water?
Yeah, we're looking at also setting a hydrant right on the south side of the turnpike, right where they start the project, that we would be able to string hoses from that hydrant to Talsman to feed the city if necessary, if we had a break.
But where would the water come from? 24.
Right off of 24.
If you look at this map, water line comes down here. And what's going to, what's going to be replaced is from about here up to this area. The hydrant that you was talking about would be setting here and we've got a water tank sitting back in here and so we run lines over to that area. Is that correct?
Yes.
Hopefully carry us through.
I'm sorry?
That would hopefully carry us through during that.
And again, the 12-inch coming off of 46 carried the city for probably 30, 40, 50 years.
No.
And again, we're not in the peak demand time of the year.
And the city was much smaller at that time too.
Not really. It was only 20 years ago it would have been in the service.
Hopefully it will be okay. Thank you. In regard to the street lighting, one thing the city might consider, there's new types of street lighting called LED lighting, much more efficient than either scrotium vapor or incandescent because of really nice streetlights they use on. Heck of a lot less power and long-term, that's the way most cities are growing. In fact, it might be a good idea for us to consider replacing them all, just funded by the power savings. It was like 80% less power.
And they're much brighter. And they're much brighter.
And they last forever. That's just an option if we're looking at replacing systems, some street lighting somewhere. One last thing, a couple things. When I was a salve person, when I worked overtime, I didn't get paid for it. Why aren't the city people for salaries getting paid for overtime? Why? Salve people have a contract.
It's any more salary than it's right.
But they feed overtime.
It describes the normal work week being 40 hours and it's usually 8 to 4:30, based on what different in their party agreement. Anytime beyond that is overtime or comp time. Options like the one or the other.
Wish I hadn't jumped like that, I'd be a millionaire.
I don't think you would.
What's that?
I don't think you would.
I don't know if there's many public servants that are.
I don't think you would.
Ted, you're not a millionaire.
Far from it.
I've got time and a half for all the hours I put in. Lot of money over a 40-year career, I tell you that.
It's a lot of lost time away from your family as well.
Right, yeah. My employer didn't really give a crude about that. We put in 60 hours a week normally.
Now we got the private sector, totally different than a public.
Maybe we need some change, it's okay. And lastly, Mr. Frizzini, I'd like to say thank you also. Anytime I had a question, he was more than gracious to help. And hopefully can get somebody to do the same in that position. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, everybody. Gina Morale, I live at 356 Timber Run Drive. Couple real quick things I wanted to talk about tonight. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the gate that was previously installed at Timber Run has been completely removed and there are vehicles already using the temporary access. So I just wanted to let you guys or make you guys aware of that, even though there's an emergency vehicles only sign posted there, there's already vehicles using the temporary access. I'm sure as the weather gets better and people start walking through the neighborhoods and realizing that the gate is not there, it's going to be used even more frequently. Second thing I wanted to just talk about, I just wanted to ask if there's been any discussions or any plans for discussions or any decisions regarding a gate being installed at Timber Run upon the completion of the Gibson Road Bridge. So I just wanted to see if there's been any progress or any discussions about that. If not, is there anything that I can do or the residents in Stonebridge at Timber Run can do to help sort of facilitate that and keep that moving forward?
Gina, going back, looking at the original plans for those developments, there was never intended to be a separation there in the first place that was supposed to be congruent back and forth. Am I right?
There's been a dedicated roadway there for over 20 years.
There's been a dedicated roadway there for over twenty years.
Okay, but I just...
It's on the map. You can see it on the map. Chuck, if you don't mind pointing out where the dedicated road is there.
Not quite tall enough. That shows a dedicated roadway.
Well, even with, I mean, what I can't tell you, and maybe it has been, but I can tell you that the, the map that I have when I purchased my property shows cul-de-sac back there with the potential connection of Lake Wobegon and that connecting, okay? Even if that, even if it was a dedicated public right-of-way, I guess the question is what benefit, can anybody explain what benefit that has to the city, to the residents in the city of Canfield? There's no, there's no benefit whatsoever other than the emergency access. I mean, are we looking out for the best interest of our residents, or are we looking out for the best interest of the township? I'm confused.
Well, I would tell you that the public safety departments, the police and the fire, were both opposed to gate there.
Were both opposing?
Right. And I've had those conversations with them since you appeared at the last council, or two council meetings ago.
Can I ask, can I ask why?
It's just a matter of pursuit, it's a matter of access. You know, it's just not...
Loss of life.
Yeah, and if you're dealing with a loss of life situation or emergent situation, the gate's a problem. And the district serves the city and the township. The police department serves the city, obviously, but in terms of pursuits, et cetera, that's just a problem for them. And I've asked that specific question of both chiefs. Lord, excuse me, I'm the police chief, but I was told of the fire chief's opinion.
Mr. Morale?
Yes?
I was city manager at the time that that development was put in. In looking at that, we had discussions with regard to what was in the best interest of the community in general, the township and the city, and whether there should be some way of connecting those two subdivisions together, just to give better traffic flow, long range. You know, not trying to isolate the city of Canfield from Canfield Township, but that it appeared to me that it was in everybody's best interest and the long-range best interest of the community in general to have access through there. Otherwise, the residents north have primarily one way in and out of their development.
Correct.
Okay? And granted, you know, that wasn't anything that we had any control over, and could we have eliminated that? Yes. But in looking at the overall plan, and let's look at it from a big picture, what's the community gonna look like in twenty years, thirty years, forty years? Wouldn't we have been better off planning for that roadway at that time than having to figure out a way to build a roadway sometime in the future? And that's why the roadway was shown there as a dedicated roadway, although it wasn't originally developed. You want to show it as a dedicated roadway.
Yeah, I'm surprised you say that your maps that you were handed at the time of your acquisition showed a cul-de-sac. They should have noted that as a temporary cul-de-sac, because when the cul-de-sac went in there, it was clearly as a temporary solution. That dedicated roadway's been in there for, Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say almost fifteen years, twenty years, I think?
He might give a Thomas.
Nineteen ninety. Nineteen ninety, so twenty-five years. To the extent that you didn't get the right information, that's, that's an issue.
Well, like I said, I mean, it's, it's a flat map from the, from the subdivision that shows the cul-de-sac.
Should show a temporary.
Yeah, so...
Well, those are just plot maps, phases that builders give out that really doesn't mean nothing. It's not recorded that way until the country or the city.
As each lake of Stonebridge was built, there was a cul-de-sac where the phase ended. You know, as they built Jade Circle, there was a cul-de-sac at that point. As they built Alabaster, it was a cul-de-sac. So it grew out to that point, and the ultimate plan, you know, the master plan always showed that exit. And I, I served as city manager as a city engineer at that particular time when that development was proposed and purchased from the county. It was the old county home.
Well, I know, like, I can tell you, when I moved in, there was no cul-de-sac at the end of the road, it ended right into basically a swamp.
Yeah.
There was no turnaround. In fact, I came in here a couple times to talk, because you had garbage trucks, school buses, everything coming down the road, picking kids up, and then have to back down the road, and like, somebody's gonna get run over.
That's a problem.
You know, so there was no cul-de-sac when I moved in.
I remember that. They didn't start developing, no need for those phases, ten or nine. What they did, there was one big plot, and when they came in, they came in phases, phase one, two, three. That back part was like phase eight, nine. So it was just woods and a dead road there, because it wasn't accepted by the city yet.
Why are they selling lots on subdivision property?
They can't sell lots until it's accepted by the city and all the improvements are in.
If you, when you bought your lot, that section up to your house would have been accepted by the city, or they could not have sold lots.
Yeah, and then the other ones, they, they couldn't sell in phase eight or nine until they got accepted and all the improvements were in. This is why they're in a hurry to get the approvals in, because they can sell lots. They don't get it approved, they can't sell a lot.
Wouldn't part of that improvement be the installation of that cul-de-sac?
Only if it's in that phase. So they sold lots in phase one, phase two, as they built phase three, phase four. They didn't have to do the whole development to sell a lot, but that was one big lot. Every time they came into a phase, it was divided into like twenty lots. So then this section was one big lot left. So when they came in, they divided another twenty lots. You still had that big back section there, you still got a big section down there where Alabaster is. If you look on that map between Wobegon Court and Alabaster, it's a big empty lot. That's gonna be developed someday into six lots or twelve lots. But they can't go down there now, it's just empty space.
I just, I mean, is, is the decision then that there's not gonna be a gate installed? Is that, I mean, is that what I'm, what I'm hearing?
Correct.
That there's not gonna be a gate?
Yeah.
Gino, just, you and I have talked, and I want you to know that I've talked to Chief Hutchinson, talked to legal counsel, and to Joe, and it looks like it's a thorough there that's been there forever, and that carries a lot of weight. Personally, I'm with you, I don't want that traffic on Timber Run. Apparently, it's going to be there, or whatever develops from this. We have had some extensive dialogue on this.
And has, has anybody weighed the detriment of having that, that road connected versus the emergency access? I can't understand how a gate is gonna, how a gate is gonna restrict the police or fire from getting back there.
Or you're not on the other side of that gate having a heart attack, right? If you're on the other side of that gate having a heart attack, do you want that EMP or fire truck stoping, opening a gate, remotely opening a gate, waiting that minute or so for that to happen? Or if you're a police officer chasing a suspect, you wanna have to get out of that car, open a gate or remotely open that gate? It's just pretty easy to understand.
Well, I am in that situation, though, because Timber Run, once you, once you go past the culvert on, on Timber Run, just, it'd be just north of Sandstone, and that there is, there is no access back to my property other than Timber Run Drive, okay? So I guess what I'm saying is by, by the time the police come there and realize that that access is closed off, and drive around, go out Herbert Road to forty-six, and then go down Gibson Road, and that, I mean, is that, is that gonna benefit anybody in the city, I guess is the question? It's not gonna benefit me, and I can tell you that I'm not gonna use that road to get access to Austintown when, I mean, I looked at buying a house in Westbury when we were looking, okay? And if you've driven down Gibson Road in that, the condition of that road, I said to myself, I'll spend more money in tires and struts and shocks on my vehicles. You know, I mean, it was ridiculous. And I even said, there's, there's no other access back here. You gotta come down, what, a mile, mile and a half of, of that roadway to get back there. I'm not interested. So that's why I bought where I did.
We, there was a, in Westbury, there was a fire, and people were trying to get to the airport, and there was chaos there. And, and then think about if somebody else would have been having an emergency, we wouldn't have been able to get any more emergency vehicles back there to service them. So in that respect, we need that, we need that access.
I, I agree completely with the emergency access. I'm not arguing the emergency access. I guess what I'm saying is, in that exact scenario, it would have taken somebody to go over there, open a lot, and open the gate, and everybody has access to their house? You've got more, you've got access for any additional emergency vehicles that needed to get back there? Anything? I mean, right now, we're, we're talking a potential, there's a hundred and some acres over there that are still undeveloped.
There's no other dedicated street in the city with a gate on it, though. I mean, we can't gate dedicated streets. We can't generate, when we don't. It's simply, there's high traffic counts on a lot of streets within the city. That doesn't mean we're gonna gate them, you know? You just can't have a gate on a dedicated city.
But you're, you're taking city tra, you're taking city residential subdivision within the city and using that. If, if that was a city of Canfield residential subdivision over there, I, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, we're, we're making this modification, we're, we're putting this in, and, and I don't see any benefit to the city of, of Canfield, I guess, other than that emergency access. That's all I'm, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
Well, when that came before planning, any subdivision we had, we planned ahead of time to connect the outer parts of the city in case it gets annexed. Lower Hills was not in the city at first, it was annexed into the city. If you look at Oak Tree and Pine Home, there is a dedicated street there, too, it's just grass right now. But down the future, maybe thirty years from now, if someone buys that product, wants to develop it, there's place for that road to go in, to connect it in the city. If they were annexed that part out there, it'll be part of the city. That's the planning commission planned to have access to down a part of the city. And every new development there, you'll see, if there's not a road connecting like Dartman and Pine Home, there's a dedicated road there to go in.
Mr. Morale, I think you're correct in that by opening that roadway up, there's gonna be more traffic on Timber Run than just local traffic. And I think it's going to wear faster than if you just had that local traffic there. But again, in the essence of good planning, community-wide, and community, I'm taking a look at an area larger than the city of Canfield. I think it just seems like it's a logical thing to do.
I mean, I don't understand why the developer of Westbury couldn't have planned to connect the road out to Turner Road.
I don't understand that either.
I mean, well, I appreciate everybody's time. I, you know, I disagree with that, with that, but I do appreciate your time, and I'm sure I'll see you guys.
Gino, before you leave, one more comment. Hutch brought this, Chief Hutchinson brought this to my attention. You could have a powered gate that emergency forces would have remote, much like Hunter's Woods going out to Paul Myrick, you're familiar with that. That presents problems, too. Power failure, you've got a frustrated fire truck or a policeman sitting there, and it just could develop into a story we don't wanna write about the Canfield community. And we're making inroads into making the Canfield community a better relationship, the two entities involved here. So it's a complicated situation, and I'll go on record and say I don't want that traffic on Timber Run either, but I think I'm gonna have to live with it as you are. We've had extensive dialogue. We've had extensive dialogue. I don't want you to think that we're treating this lightly.
No, I understand, I just think it poses additional hazards as well. There's kids all over the place, and I can tell you, with the temporary road, there's cars that are going well over twenty-five miles an hour. What speed they're gonna, I don't know, but they, you know, they're not going twenty-five miles an hour. And you're, and you're going onto a temporary road up that hill.
I don't want this to be misunderstood, but those people that have seen the speed limit, I will personally talk to them right in here.
I'm gonna be speaking with them as well, so...
And they will, because I live every day on my street that I go on, and they go over twenty-five miles an hour every single day. And again, I've had the same conversation. I agree with that.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Under old business, there is none. Any public comments? So I guess at this point, we're going to go into executive session?
We want to set a public hearing date? Set the public hearing. Yes. Set the public hearing.
Okay. So we have a hearing date for...
The street lighting plan, Stratford Green.
Okay, for Stratford Green street lighting plan, we'll set a hearing date of...
It's suggested twenty-nine?
I suggest that April twenty-ninth at six P.M.
Of April twenty-ninth at six P.M.
And Kingslake subdivision, I suggest that May thirteenth at six P.M.
Okay, and the Kingslake subdivision will set a hearing for the May thirteenth at six P.M.
Now motion for executive session.
Do we...
You're gonna set the meeting for our discussion about the...
Twenty-second.
Yes, we'll have...
Okay.
Okay. Twenty-second, five-thirty. Okay, gotcha.
Mr. President, and I have a motion to go into executive session to, for three items, the disposition of real estate, and the discussion of disposition of real estate, pending litigation, and the employment of a public employee.
Second.
I would suggest that we then, during that, or come back in session for a chairman of our meeting, see if we...
I second that.
Okay?
Throw it off.
Throw it off.
Mr. Dragan?
Yes.
Mr. Tomsari?
Yes.
Mr. Morab?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chisholm?
Yes.